Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, February 18, 2016 meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. All members are present. The quorum has been established. Is there anyone who plans on speaking before the Planning Commission today? And just raise your right hand. And do you promise to tell the truth as you know it to the Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you very much. Disposition of minutes. Are there any improvements or any comments on the minutes from last meeting? None? Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I move we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Cases before the Commission today, number 16-01, Abfall subdivision, Tedrow Road. Mr. Logue, did you want to know anything about this, just to introduce it?
Yeah. I can give you a little bit of background here. This application, it's outside the city, within three-mile boundary, the three-mile zone where city subdivision regulations apply. There was a very, there was a lot of transactions that occurred with some large chunk of real estate that ADP, American Electric Power, or one of its subsidiaries owned, that the utility determined that they did not need anymore. And so, late 2015, they did at least, they auctioned off a lot of this real estate, sold it to property, to interested buyers. Mr. Abfall, which is case 1601, is one of the buyers. I've reviewed a big chunk of applications for subdivisions involved with these transactions. Our safety director has as well. Almost all of them, if not all of them, were greater than five acres, et cetera. And so, it's basically just a stamp and we move forward. They all had road frontage and met all the requirements, so there was no issues to get those recorded. And I believe they have been recorded at the Athens County Auditor's Office or County Courthouse. But Mr. Abfall is unique because it did not, the split in question would create a landlocked piece of real estate. And under Ohio Revised Code and Athens City subdivision regulations, you cannot have landlocked property. It must have road frontage. However, there is a, you could request or could identify an easement. An easement can be created between one property owner and another property owner to get road frontage. But an easement is technically a variance from Athens City subdivision regulations. And so, an easement needs to come before the Planning Commission, even if in this situation the piece of real estate in question is greater than five acres. Generally, greater than five acres does not require city review. It's only five acres or less meets our definition. But if an easement is required, then the size of the piece of property does not matter. So, Mr. Abfall worked with an adjoining property owner. There is draft easement language included in this application. The easement, I believe it's for a 20-foot easement, and it is stipulated in the draft that it's only for construction of a single-family residential site. It is not, one of the concerns we would have is granting an easement that could then be further subdivided and all of a sudden you have this major subdivision off of a 20-foot easement road. And so, this has been identified, I believe, as a single-family development with an easement with an adjoining property owner to tap, to get access from Tedrow Road. And so, Mr. Abfall is here to ask for a recommendation to city council. Variances from subdivision regulations are ultimately awarded by council with a recommendation for either approval or denial by the Athens City Planning Commission. The only outstanding issue that would apply in this situation, because it's an easement, that would not apply for any other piece of real estate that's greater than five acres, is that our health, our health code requirements do kick in in this situation, even though it's greater than five acres. I know that Mr. Abfall was working with Chuck Hammer at the Athens City County Health Department, and they were getting a soil test done. I don't know if that's been completed yet. And Mr. Abfall can speak on that. That was one of the concerns we would have, is also awarding an easement to a piece of real estate that septic sanitary system cannot treat the, any sewage that may be created. So then, we have a public health problem, perhaps. And that's all I have.
Mr. Abfall, do you care to address the Commission?
Sure.
Okay. Just come up to the podium.
Okay.
And if you would, just state your name and your current address.
My name is Benjamin Abfall. Current address is 1529 State Route in Albany. I've been working with Kevin Lewis, an approved soil scientist, or whoever, however you want to define him through the Health Department, on getting the soil test done and approval for the septic system. It would be for a three-bedroom house. And Kevin is well aware of your requirements for a one-and-a-half-acre area for that, for a primary and a secondary site. And he has found sufficient evidence that there is plenty of room there and suitable soils for that. I meant to print out the report that he gave me, but I forgot to do that. But I haven't emailed it to Chuck Hammer. I've not heard any response from him yet. But when I spoke to him earlier, he had stated as long as Kevin could find sufficient evidence that there would be no problems, he had no problems tamping the approval. So...
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
When I wanted to point out that that's not our regulations, the city-county Health Department regulations in terms of the acreage around for a septic system and then for the replacement.
Mm-hmm.
And it sounds like you're working through that.
Yep.
I'm curious as to why you landed on a 20-foot easement versus 30. I thought 30 was kind of our standard if it was just shared between two property owners.
I don't know.
You didn't? Okay.
I didn't know there was a standard, I guess.
Well, there was standard language that was created, and I believe adopted by the city when I worked in my former, you know, for the county planner, about these easements and having standard language. And also, at that time, we also had it included in here if there's a dispute, like a dispute resolution clause between the two property owners maintaining. And I believe it referenced utilizing mediation services. So, I can find that language.
There is language in the agreement between the property owners. Exhibit A, or no, excuse me. Easement and right-of-way, it says, "Abfall's, their heirs, successors, and assigns shall solely maintain driveway across, on, or over the adjoining property owner tracks of land."
So, there's no agreement to be made?
Right.
I don't think.
The easement is strictly for the Abfells to access. And so, the Abfells are agreeing to maintain, or successors or assigns.
Again, I thought the minimum was the 30 feet between two property owners.
I am unaware of that, Paula. As you know, I'm trying my best with subdivision situations. That may be possible. I don't know that we have a minimum for an easement, though. Are you saying it's a minimum for the easement?
We, I mean...
Because we have minimums for roads, et cetera.
And maybe it's just a recommendation for what I used to call a P-A, a private access easement.
For like a driveway dimension, in Athens City Code, the minimum width of a residential driveway is 10 feet with a maximum width of 30. For a commercial, the minimum width is 15, and for an industrial, the minimum width is So, that's, but that's for a driveway.
And that's a...
30 feet, I believe, is our minimum for a road.
And it is simply a driveway?
It is. Yeah. And 20 feet, if it was a 10-feet, if it's a 20-foot easement with a 10-foot driveway, five feet on either side, if you need to do ditching for stormwater runoff or something, that should be adequate.
Other questions?
Just the property. Just the property. Just hold on a minute.
It's recommending that you include the language that the Health Department approval is obtained.
And that these would be recorded, I think, too.
Oh, yes.
It will be. We'll get all the final approvals and everything.
Yeah. I just think maybe for our purposes, it would be good to have that in writing.
Okay.
What was the last thing she said?
To include the recording of the easement.
Okay. Okay. Does anybody want to put that in a motion?
Did you say how Christie just did? Okay. I make a, I make a motion to recommend approval of case 16-01, the Abfall subdivision, with the contingencies that the language required by the county Health Department is addressed.
I'm sorry. They garner approval from the city-county Health Department.
Okay. So, that approval from the city-county Health Department is received and the easement is recorded.
Is it second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Sure.
I wanted to ask if anybody wanted to put a motion in for reversing the order of...
I would move.
So that we do the Fore Cook Drive first before we do discussion of... Okay.
Did you move?
I moved it in my mind.
I'll second.
To move this, so that we can discuss Fore Cook Drive.
All approving?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. So, we'll move ahead to Fore Cook Drive. Possible lot split. See, Mr. Logue, do you have any information on that?
Just some basics, and I believe Patty included them in your packets. Mr. Spezza is a gentleman I've been speaking with. He is present today. He sent an email to me about two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, asking for, to confirm the requirements within our Athens City subdivision regulations relating to a potential lot split that he would, that he is interested in pursuing. I've not received a survey or anything, so all information that Mr. Spezza has provided, I cannot, it is not certified for mathematical accuracy or anything like that. But what he was asking for was for a review to confirm that if he were to apply and provide a survey, that it would be approved. And I was cautious about giving any such review, but I did begin to try to just see what was going on here. And based on the information that was given to me, it was my determination that in order for this proposal to be approved, you would need to get a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations, because the proposal does not meet the maximum depth-to-width ratio for any newly created lot, which is identified in section 210406A4 of Athens City Title 21, which states that the maximum, maximum depth of any lot shall not be greater than three times its width. And my understanding has always been that the width should be calculated based on its frontage at the street that it accesses. And on the proposal that Mr. Spezza provided, that has 50 feet of road frontage on Cook Drive, which would mean that the maximum depth is three times 50, so it's 150 feet. I informed that to Mr. Spezza, and he said in an email to me, which I provided to you, that a surveyor that he knows of said that the width-to-depth should be calculated based on adding the front width and the rear width together and then dividing by two to give a calculation. And if we did that process, then his lot split would be approved under, would not be required to do a variance. My own, I found some communities were saying the same thing Mr. Spezza was saying. I found other communities that were clear that you should base it on your road frontage. So, from that point, I said, I said, "Well, who makes the determination?" And Mr. Spezza said, "Well, who at the city can clarify this for me?", since he and I were not in agreement during the court. And according to 210201, interpretations are the responsibility of the City Planning Commission unless another responsible party is designated to do that responsibility for the Planning Commission. So, that brings us back to the original question for the Planning Commission, is how should width-to-depth be determined? And there's a few things that we may want to consider in that, in that, is there a minimum width at that point? If you've got 50 feet in the front, but only one foot in the back, and you've got a strange triangular situation, then how do we calculate it? Or if you've got, if you, my understanding of subdivision regulations has always been that it's, the goal is to create order. And so, you want things that are, that scale up at similar sizes. You want squares rather than trapezoids. You want squares or rectangles rather than triangles. We don't want ovals and things along those lines. So, I'm not sure how we should approach this. But it seems like if we're making a ruling on how to interpret width-to-depth ratio, then that interpretation will stand for all future applications that come before us. Maybe not.
See, Mr. Spezza, do you want to come up and just, if you want to offer anything else to the discussion?
My name's Mark Spezza. I live at 240 Estates Drive. I'm also a real estate broker with Classical Real Estate. Paul and I have had a little discussion about how one determines this three-to-one rule. And my understanding was that this rule was essentially put in place to prevent quote-unquote "flag lots" from occurring, and that is having very narrow, long lots in the city or in the county. And through the process of discussing this with a surveyor, he indicated that it was his understanding that when one is measuring a lot, because sometimes you have your regular-shaped lots that are going to be long on one side, a little longer on another side, that the process that he has always approached was that you take the length of each side, multiply or add those together, then divide it. Do the same thing with the width, and that becomes your lot dimensions. So, that's kind of the approach we took before we did a survey. We wanted to make sure that, you know, we would be in compliance with the city. Any way that I look at this, though, what I have right now is I have a lot that is 50 feet wide, 70 feet in the back, so it opens up in the back. If I were to even make it wider in the back of the lot, it wouldn't change the fact that it doesn't conform with this three-to-one rule. So, that's what we're just looking for is a clarification.
You could widen at the front. You could go from 50 feet on Cook Drive to 62 or 63 feet.
We could widen it in the front, but then it starts degrading the other lot that we're separating from.
Okay.
And, you know, essentially, what we're trying to do is create lots that are acceptable. And again, I do need to clarify, this is in a business zone, so it's a B3 lot. So, what we're trying to do is create two lots that are, in effect, I guess, acceptable to the city as well as marketable as real estate.
Well, it's an interesting position to be in, because we're actually having a communication on an air and paper proposal, but not a real application.
Yes.
And I think that that's one of the levels of uncomfortableness that I have with it. It's like, hey, tell me now at first, before I even apply. So, in terms of process, I'm concerned.
Well, I think, you know, I think what I'm trying to do is, again, before I actually have this surveyed out, have the seller spend the money for a survey, make a determination based on my conversation with Paul, how the city does determine that. If that doesn't, if that's not the way it's determined, then we probably won't, you know, would not move forward with splitting the lot, because it, as I say, will start degrading the other part of the property. So, what we're looking for is how does the Planning Commission determine width and length of a lot for this purpose?
Well, I would like to ask you, first of all, what the two land uses are on either side. The Schwindler, I know on the other side is Ron McDade, and he has a duplex there, I believe.
It's actually, I think, a triplex there. So, I think it's, and I'm not sure what the zoning there is. I believe it's still in a B-zone, unless it's been reclassified. What is next to it on the other side is also a B-zone. It's actually property I own as a neighboring property.
How about Gary Schwindler? What does he have on his, on that? Is that the triplex?
No. Gary's is the lot that we're splitting.
Is it a single-family house?
It...
I just want some...
It's always been used as a single-family house, but that, it is still in that B-zone, and many of my inquiries have actually been as business zoning.
Is it in use right now, the single-family?
It is, it is actually vacant. The house has actually been vandalized.
How long has it been vacant?
I would say it's been vacant for at least two years. It was vandalized several years ago. Someone broke in, took all the copper out of it. So, essentially, for it to be brought back as a single-family residence would be fairly expensive. When I say all the copper, they also destroyed the boiler system, which is the heating unit in the house.
So, if it's, if it's going to be projected to be eventually another business use, then why wouldn't you just split the lot as long as it's vacant? I mean, just a what-if?
Well, that's what we're suggesting, that we split the lot.
A 50-inch-wide swath. Well, anyway, I guess I'm of a, I have two comments on this. I appreciate what you said, incidentally, so I understand better what it's, what's going on there. But I think it's a slippery slope to start doing pre-hearings like this. And I don't wish to, I mean, I'm not going to vote for any outcome, because I want to make sure that the next person up doesn't say, "I'm not going to draw those lines unless you give me a go-ahead."
Right.
And secondly, I wonder why we would have a planner that looks out for our interests, and I could vote ever to contradict him.
Well, my, my opinion, Nancy, in general terms, is that the guidelines are the code. And so, you follow the code, you're approved. And it's to ask, and that's where I had trouble, too, was asking when somebody is approaching and saying, "I want you to approve me prior to applying." We have people who apply all the time, and we deny, and then they go for a variance process. And they study the code, and they make a submission. Sometimes they make a submission knowing that they're going to get denied and keeping their fingers crossed that a variance will be awarded. We have an application right now, for an example, of somebody who's applied and been denied, and now we're going through a process to try to get, try to get the variance that they're requesting reviewed.
So, it's not, you know, if you bring it back, and if you bring this engineer who, and he talks to us about it, perhaps I would change my mind. But I would not want to, first of all, countermand what Paul has used as his, I mean, which has been our operating procedure. And I also don't want to do it in advance. I don't want to start the process of having two or three levels of meeting before we get here. Now, I understand, I think your best argument is that area is changing, but I'm not 100% sure that it is. From a resident, I mean, you know, I can think of things we did from Family Dollar onward, right? You know?
It's not a residential area. It's a B3 business area. And let me make clarification. I'm not asking for a preapproval. What I'm asking for is determination from the Planning Commission, how you determine length and width based on the code.
Well, that would be a preapproval, in effect, wouldn't it?
How's that a preapproval?
Is that a guarantee?
I still have to, at some point, then, survey it and bring that to this Commission. My question to you is, how is that determined? How does this Commission determine whether width is determined strictly on the frontage, or is the width of a lot determined as I was told it was determined? And maybe that's something you can't decide now, I don't know. But what I'm asking is, how is that determined?
I would go back to what I said earlier. We have used that particular approach, as the code says. I'm not comfortable with changing, at least not on a dime, at least not knowing what's, what's going to happen. So, anyway, that's my piece.
I would agree. I would agree. I think, obviously, Paul has done some research on this. I think it might be, it might behoove us and city council as well to kind of think about, maybe we do need to codify some kind of guidance for this specifically. And if that's the case, then we probably do need to be, do more intensive research and see what best practices have been across communities similar to ours, and how those have worked out. But yeah, I agree with you. I think, you know, to say today, "This is how we do it," would be very premature.
And I think that's all I'm asking here, is a determination, how you are looking at length-to-width in terms of this three-to-one rule. That's all I'm asking for, how that's determined. And that will pretty much determine whether I move forward with the lot split, I believe. So, that's all I have to say.
Anything else?
Something that needs further examination or whatever, that's fine.
Yeah. I think that it's, I guess it's apparent we need further examination, further discussion on this. So, yeah, I think it would be a little bit premature then to give you a response, you know, a definitive response at this point, because you've obviously identified a weak spot that...
And there may be some history with this as well, that, you know, you may have, you may find that in the past, this is an issue that's already been looked at and predetermined. And I don't want to, you know, I don't want to bring up previous, you know, scenarios unless I know for sure. But, you know, it could be something that might actually be out there already.
You know, that's, what you just said is exactly where I'm sitting, is I need to, I want to go back and look at historically, what has, what has been the approach moving forward. And I think we all should, is to look to see, you know. And I concur with Christie, you know, no decision right now, but...
I do, we're here to talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Appreciate it. Title 41 review.
Well, I didn't get together with Christie. Like, it was my homework. But I just kind of breezed through. So, what you have is, I bolded some areas, then I put in red, just talking, like, do we want to consider anything? So, you guys ready to go through this?
Yeah, sure.
So, you start out with the intent, and it says in current language, "The intent is not to prevent construction of project." I wondered if we would consider adding a sentence, "Not to prevent construction of a project, rather ensure any development project covered herein meets the prescribed intent." And maybe it's verbiage that's not even needed, but by it stopping there, "Not to prevent construction of a project," I just feel like it might miss that. Go ahead.
Well, I think that you ought to understand that, and Paul brought it up last time, but I was so befuddled, I didn't remember. But this site plan review document that we have has been, was initially, for a month and a half, maybe two months, the chamber met. And I was thinking about Larry Payne and a few other people. A lot of the additions were efforts by council to get it through. And I'm, I think that particular phrase that Paula picked up on is one of them. And I'm, I think that particular phrase that Paula picked up on is one of them, you know, just to kind of placate, or, well, maybe that's not the right word, but to assure the people that we were trying to make it better, to make sure that issues that were on, found that were too, it was too late to deal with. And so it was for all the best intentions, and I agree with Paula, I think we should clarify that a bit, because it does sound like we're defensive, and I don't think we should be. We're trying to make a city for the future.
I don't believe I was here at the time.
No.
There was a lot of concern of just implementing this and putting this into city code, and there was a lot of people who thought that just on a whim, somebody could say yes or no to a project, even if it meets codes and all these.
Yeah, and it was irrelevant.
I don't think that language is unusual for, for model codes. I think that's.
I mean, it was, yeah, I mean, it was, they gave us a code, and then we tweaked it, and we tweaked it with business.
I mean, I've seen that specific language used in other, in other city codes, so I think, I think there's probably, not to say that we can't enhance that language, but I think probably if we were, if the original code was based on model code work, this was language that had been embedded.
I would hope so, but I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, could you say something like, "The intent is to ensure any development project covered herein meets the prescribed intent," and delete the "not to prevent construction of a project"?
Well, you know, I don't mind "not to prevent," but I like the clarification, so, you know, it's up to you, guys, ambivalent.
I believe that Nancy's spot on, that that sentence, "The intent is not to prevent construction of a project," was deliberately inserted because of the fear surrounding this Title 41.
One of the most Mr. Spesel.
So.
So, anyway.
Food for thought.
Food for thought.
And home occupations, and Paul and Christie, I apologize for not doing full homework.
No, my understanding was, we were going to talk today about what we want to address, and then all of us would get together to figure out the specific language of how to address those issues. So I don't think you, I don't think you fell out on the job at all. I think, or my, my understanding was that this was how we were going to kind of do it, figure out what, what we wanted, kind of, look to potentially change or adjust, and then we can get together and figure out what language works for that.
So I added, "Are home occupations, should we include those as opposed to exclude it only because of what's coming forward on the left?" The shared economy, the, you know.
So are home occupations addressed anywhere else in here?
Yes, they are.
In terms of reviews?
No, they're, well, they're permitted, you just, I don't have the top of it, but their home occupations are permitted, such as doctors, dentists, lawyers, et cetera. There's a few rules about them. They have to have a separate entrance than the primary residence.
An employee.
What's that?
Single employee, something.
Single employee plus the prop, the doctor, dentist, or lawyer who lives in the house, things like that.
I think most of the time we've had questions about what is a home occupation other than the shingled ones?
Correct.
And is, would this apply, that was, over the 30 years I've had?
Yeah, there's, you know, you might have an accountant who just does all their work on the computer, or somebody who helps me.
That was good, I mean, you know.
We have situations like that in town, but there's not too many. There's a dentist on Hudson or in that neighborhood. There might be an attorney or two who practices out of their home, but we don't, I can't think of very many.
Accountants.
I guess, I'm just wondering how vague or clear the language is on what the permitted occupations are.
It's pretty good.
So.
We could look at it, but I think is, in terms of laws, the code, zoning code, there's lots of holes in it, but that one is fairly solid, I think.
Solid.
You might loosen it up for the home occupation.
Well, I think, probably, if you're going to, if we're going to talk about.
A B and B?
Making a change to home occupations here, we need to figure out how it's addressed in the rest of the code, and make sure that we're not creating.
A lot of times, Paula, a home occupation is just, really, just a change of use within the structure. It's not a, it may not even have any exterior, might not do anything else to the home. I mean, there might be some walls being moved around internally and some free front outlets being added or grounded or something, but there may not be any really noticeable change to the actual, to the physical structure. And a lot of, a lot of, a lot of Title 41 is about physical change to build environment.
So, I just threw it out there, and we can, I can tell you that some of the, and this came up previously in planning, some concerns from citizens are in neighborhoods are, they have, they have contracting business, and they're contracting cars, or the taxi business, and he has multiple cars parked in the neighborhood, you know, kind of thing. Maybe outside this group, but, well, at least this discussion on this, but they've asked for us to look at that.
Well, I think it's worth looking at it and looking at, you know, what the, how it's currently regulated in other parts of the code and figuring out, like, if any adjustments need to be made in this section or in other sections to kind of balance out and address concerns that arise.
And the one occup, home occupation in my neighborhood was a, a music business that spiraled, and pretty soon there were big trucks coming into Briarwood and offloading and onloading, and I think in response to that particular experience, in the 23, it was changed somewhat. I mean, they were, they whacked out all the milliners and things like that, and had more appropriate uses. But, anyway, I hate to always be the old fogey that does the history, but I guess I am.
Sorry, Nancy. On the next section procedure, we all seem to agree that we don't need to file five paper copies.
Yes.
Because we love trees. I put, "Do you want one? You want two." And then the "File one print copy at the community center," I don't know that that's a current.
Get rid of it.
And then I just added, "Do we want to make sure that prior to when they come to us, that they've already received all their other variances or approvals?"
I think we should be able to suggest.
I think we generally tried to do that.
We have tried.
The one I know that we always required was, if you need any variances, you must get your variances prior to, because there was always a concern that if, if the planning commission approved the site plan and conditions it for a variance, then they go before the board zoning field and say, "Well, everybody, the planning commission said everything's fine, you just have to give me your variance." We didn't want it to look like the planning commission was trying to frame it out, to not allow the VDA to make their decision independently. But we have with some of the other commissions and boards, given a little bit of flexibility because they only meet typically once a month, where the planning commission meets twice, and we've got timeframes that are built in based on a planning commission schedule that's kind of already written into Title 41. And sometimes you might have a planning, or a committee, like Shade Tree Commission, for example, meets on Thursdays, I think, and you might actually have a planning commission on Thursday at noon, and Shade Tree Commission at Thursday at 7:00. And so then to require them to wait a whole other month to appear before the planning commission, seems like it might not move things along in a time, subject to the study.
Christie, could I ask? One of the problems that I see with this, the time, the time constraint is further down, and that's also a constraint, but one of the problems is, when we have the people coming in on Title 41, they're often the engineers, and, you know, you don't really get to the point where you ask them to, to explain what they're doing. And I think it's kind of a shortcoming, you know, Andy's already signed off on it, and you don't know if he was signing off five minutes of, you know, looking at it and saying, "That looks good," you know, that was always my concern in my small experience on this commission, that I felt like, and I don't want to be bitter, but by the highway really annoys me still, where the, there wasn't, there wasn't reason thought, I thought, by, in that passage, but that's just my opinion, and it's worth 50 cents or less. But I do think that the, that was in there because we wanted everybody to be able to see and be, everyone, you know, anybody who wanted to know what was going on, because I think that it was like closing the door after the horse ran away, because everybody was saying, "How on earth did they ever allow those houses to be built on Stewart Street?" You know, with, you know, the whole house held up by a pole, and it was just, you know, people were just kind of indignant. So that's the context of this. And I don't think it's happening the same way anymore, but that was certainly an issue, because I haven't seen any go up lately. Thank God. So that's where it came from, all those multiple copies and telling, because they said, "Oh, they're changing my neighborhood, and I don't even know it."
Well, what I hear is you feel it's still reasonable to try to assist them through the process.
Exactly.
Get the variances, but if they have to go to the Shade Tree Commission or something, so it doesn't. And then I do just ask a couple times in the documents whether or not those time constraints are working for us, you know.
Well, I think, didn't John, I asked John about it a couple of months ago, and he said that he, I don't, he might have had a way to organize the time, but I'd like to either have up to 30 days or else just days, not business days, because it's three weeks, basically, business days. And I can think of some times when we really had some big dust-ups over business days versus calendar days, so, within 30 days, you know, 31, depending. I don't know, just my, from experience, again, it seems like it's been a, okay, but.
I think these time constraints were, again, a result of when it was first adopted in order to say, "We're not slowing down your development," or just a review board.
And you think back, Paula, and you say, gee, almost all of them are here before they have development, so we can ask them to, you know, it's not like you're rubber-stamping something, it's like you're helping them. Really, really, it's really like you're helping them.
I failed to look back, like, to check, if some of them are minutes, and I think I need to be there, because we had a pretty good discussion last time about how this is going.
One thing we don't have in here, based on the comments, is that the, there is no requirement for a preliminary review to be held with the planning commission. It just says a preliminary, in 4104A, preliminary review will be held with the safety director his or her designated to discuss general plan outline. So maybe, maybe the two-step is, you know, typically, the meetings have been co-director and planner, and, you know, the city engineer, somebody needs to be brought in, we have those meetings. And usually, there are several meetings that go on before it comes to the planning commission, just to try to hash out any, any details, especially with, you know, connections of sewers and stormwater and side driveways and all those issues, we try to hash out as much as possible. But maybe requiring a preliminary meeting at the planning commission makes the foreign approval granted. A lot, a lot of them do do that already, of course, but that seems like a good way, because if there are specific issues from a planning perspective that the commission would like to address or to encourage to consider a change, even if they don't have to, maybe that would be an effective way to do it, so that that discussion's happening prior to the day that they're asking for the approval. I don't know.
Sounds simple, just changing from the service safety director, here's it to the planning commission.
Just so we don't use the term. I mean, it would be like a technical review committee of the whole.
Right.
As opposed to a small, what was the case before? You know, and not a full-blown plan.
Right.
Mr. Spesel will come back otherwise.
Right. But Ron, Lucy and I have a meeting next week with, with somebody who's preparing to submit a Title 41 application, but we're just going to have a sit-down to better understand it, but we've met with the architects of the property several times already in the last six months, just discussing what they want to do. And I'm not sure, but what I would do is, I would, we always, it's optional to them not required. I don't know if it's a benefit or not. Only other comment I would have on that, the public, the outreach part, was that we do require that they give us an electronic copy, but I don't know if this should just be an internal policy with size, et cetera, you know, PDF copy with, with any document. And then internally, I think it's more effective for the city to be, to make sure that we're posting that documentation on the city website, and if we're, you know, I don't know that a press release is needed, but if we're utilizing social media and things like that, that's ways to let people know that it's out there. That seems more effective than just leaving a copy of the document at the community center.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If we're going to leave one at the community center, we, like, we always have copies at the code office, of course, but we probably make sure that there's a copy at City Hall, too, so that's convenient for anybody who would want to review it. But I think a digital version is the most effective way, because that can be emailed or downloaded from a website.
Except if it can't.
Right, yeah.
Can't see. Sometimes I can't see it. You know, I don't.
It's something that can be easily printed at eight and a half by 11 would make the most sense for somebody's home, if they want to print that.
My only concern with that would be, if there are state regulations, because some of the state regulations regarding, like, records are a little bit archaic, and so I don't know, I think we should make sure that there's not something in Ohio Revised Code or somewhere that says we have to have, do you know what I'm saying? And probably there's not, but I know that there are, with, like, records retention and things like that, there are things that surprise me in terms of what, what requires a paper copy to be kept versus electronic copies and things like that. So, just kind of to cover ourselves, and the law director may be more familiar with that, but I think that's.
She's looking into it as we speak.
Oh, okay.
Because this is something similar came up just yesterday, and I, because well, Ohio Revised Codes does speak to electronic, you know, storage of items, but I believe it also says something about a physical copy, which is redundant.
Yeah.
In an odd way.
So, again, just asking about time constraints, asking if these standards, 1-inch equals 20 feet, are still good from that.
Is that good?
I seem to be.
It's interesting, I was just looking at earlier cases, and it's 1-inch equals 50 on a couple, and 1-inch equals 100 on a couple, and I think it's kind of all over the place. 1 and 20, I find to be, I mean, that's pretty fine-grained in terms of scale, but.
Yeah, I was wondering also, at the same time, it's a little bit of a side trip, but is there any way you can distinguish between cell towers and, you know, division, you know? X keeps saying, you know.
She did ask us that last time.
I missed a question there, distinguish between.
You know, like, a cell tower is pretty straightforward, and usually I don't understand what they're doing anyway. But the other one is, you know, on a, if it's a lot.
Right.
If there's a lot of change in a neighborhood, then, you know, I think that would require, maybe you could cut right to the chase and have the small committee for things that are relatively straightforward. Oh, there's a, never mind, you can't define it, I just, I can't define straightforward, I can't do it.
Well, maybe when we get done tackling this, we'll look back at that wireless telecommunication ordinance, which is a very good ordinance, and it was modeled and strict, but yes, it's got a lot of diagrams and wires and things that are way over my head as well, but it's, it really is a good.
And maybe not everything needs to go before the planning commission, maybe it's only the construction of new needs to be reviewed, but minor modifications or just, you know, replacing some equipment on an existing tower, maybe that doesn't need to even be reviewed by planning.
Yeah, but, you know, I can think back of several times for Paula, because she had an interest in, say, repairing the garage, was in her bailiwick, she made, you know, she made a difference, she asked the right questions, so, you know, I'm ambivalent, again, even though I was dogmatic before. Okay.
And then I just put, we have, and have add in here, that if we need to have a registered PE or somebody, a professional outside, that we can do that and charge back to the developer. So I just, that was just an internal question.
Yes.
Okay, what's this one? I'm just curious, under traffic, and I have to be this way, because I've, we've talked about access management for years, we still don't have an access management program, but I know that our city engineer would really like to have that in terms of traffic impact. So, I just asked under traffic, you know, that you can require a traffic impact study or access request study. Do we need to enhance? Do we want to add language? Or maybe it needs more broadened language about conformity with a comprehensive plan in this document somewhere? And I did not see accessibility language in the traffic.
Probably should be that, too.
It speaks to vehicular bicycle and pedestrian movement, but I know that the mayor would be interested in making sure that language included.
Could I, could I follow up on that and say that I'm concerned, having been out on the East End quite a bit, and with the no-left turn on the north side of the street? I mean, is that a policy or is it not? No, no-left turns along the north side of the street. Well, it was, it was.
I mean, you're looking at me, but I don't think I'm the first.
Well, you did the "with to death," what the heck?
He did not have any role in that.
Well, I know, but I think we need to have something.
We are working towards that in our East State Street design study for the improvements down there, between restricting or prohibiting left-hand turns, and then how we allow a safe island pedestrians at the same time.
My, my, the impetus to that was, Title 41. My, my, the impetus to that was Title 41 for the Fairfield Inn. We required them not to have a left, you know, and, and I think that it should either be enforced pretty much uniformly or else not. And the sooner we get there, the better, in my opinion.
Tim Hortons was another one that used to put the little median pork chop or whatever.
It works, it works, I think.
Works when people.
When people obey the law, yeah. But they, they do go out around with the stop signs, which is good. Okay, that was just where that came from.
I just wanted it under nuisance, and we're not gonna figure it out all today, but if you have ideas, are there any additions needed that, in terms of what creates a nuisance?
How about from sustainability, Paula? Is there anything from the sustainability group that could go in here? Is it, is it codified yet?
It isn't.
Okay.
I don't, in Title 41 of the whole?
No, no, where you say.
She's asking about your commission, the environmental sustainability.
Undo disturbance caused by, and you know, you could also include cutting down a lot of trees or because of erosion and, I don't know. Okay, maybe I can shut up.
Just a note that I don't know that we're utilizing bonds a lot, unless, maybe we haven't had them. Again, back to asking whether or not 200 feet off of the site is, I have 200 feet there, 100 feet there, there may be a science behind this, and I just haven't had a chance to go over the city engineer.
No, it was a compromise to get it passed.
From the next page, I have location type and screening details, I'm just wondering, is there any additional regulations that we feel that we might want to consider when it comes to screening? And this comes in to play when you've got something on Stimson that backs up to Morris or look what's happening on East State Street. I'm just.
Yeah. 3D might have helped at that time. I must be dazzled by turning the building and.
I know.
I mean, we just.
Unbelievable. And then down in M, it was just, should we include rain gardens, stormwater, because we mentioned.
That's part of the sustainability.
Water features. And you know, our, our stormwater plan is really getting flushed out, so.
I like.
And then this is back to you about adding water supply source as well as sanitary, and maybe it spoke to it somewhere else, but I don't know why I have it in your parking.
Can't knock it on my head. But, you know, going back to what you said earlier on page three, I was wondering if that would be, if there would be some way that you would try to consolidate all the traffic into one particular X ingress and egress? And at this point, would we even be able to do it? Probably not. But you know, you look at East State Street, North Side, where all those openings are, where it's McDonald's, Wendy's, Fairfield Inn, it's just a wreck.
They did do a traffic info study, and it came back, the model that would, didn't adversely impact in terms of the, what do you call it, tri-genere? I know, but it's hard to believe, isn't it, that right next to each other?
I know, but it's very confusing. Then people will whip up, left, okay.
And then back to, the only reason I add the water supply source as well as sanitary is related to some things that we've had on East State Street, where how do you connect with the sewer, and so maybe we just need to work with the city engineer on language there. I'm kind of looking your way, Kristi, for guidance.
Give her an example.
Yeah.
Better be stable, girl.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to think, because at the time I left Grove City, you know, these were things that were, especially rain gardens and sustainability issues were things that we were starting to address, but it hadn't been codified at the time I left, so I don't have any concrete, like this is how we did it, and this might be something that could work, but I'm sure that there are examples out there that we can find of, of cities who have addressed this in their codes.
Or can evolve with it, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I think that could, that could be, that probably, there's probably are things that we need to address.
Okay. I will run this off by that Andy asking to get back some comments and have it through the next one. And I just thought it odd that the service safety director gets to determine appropriate to the site in terms of existing proposed topography, so it just seems odd. And then you know we want to change down here the mass, we're not going to use the term mass, and I forgot it's in our minutes here about some language that you did suggest that we could incorporate.
Yeah.
Because of the whole, you know, the height.
Oh, gosh, yes.
And then that, I spoke to that whole section about approving minor modifications, whether or not you wanted it to be ands, ors, you know, or all of the above, and then asking whether or not good enough on the major change, so those are my comments per step.
Okay, so let me ask a question, Paula, since you've been talking. Questions? You can always just say. Shush. I was wondering if, have we covered the impact on neighborhoods that don't really have an adequate transition?
The buffer zone that would.
Yeah, the buffer zone that disappeared because they wanted it rezoned to R1. Have we, you know, I'm thinking Morris Avenue, would, its impact, I mean, those lots are very shallow, 120 feet, and so its impact on, you know, and I can't remember, that was one thing that I remember, I thought we should probably have done some additional work on.
And the buffer language, I believe, is in the land development.
Oh.
Language, or in the Shade Tree ordinance, not, not in our zoning.
I was just thinking, as part of this process, if you were living on that, those streets, I mean, I've heard people say, I used to like the smell of fried chicken.
Until I had to live with it.
Until I had to live with it 24/7.
And you have to hear the driveway window.
Can I help you? I don't know, but it's a, oh, well, the safety service director is a very powerful critter in this city.
I am? Is that what it's saying? Oh, yeah, because of all the things that.
With all the things you can do.
So, and that's something that came up, is that, is that something that you're comfortable with, like maintaining?
No, I think we need to consider the buffer.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the service safety director being responsible for.
I'm comfortable with that, I don't make decisions.
I think that that would be, you know, maybe a discussion and allow the mayor to have some consideration in terms of how he wants to operate his administration and what roles and duties are assigned.
Okay. And also, once we make the decision, it's there until somebody changes it.
Right.
And that's the problem, they come and they go.
Right.
No offense, but, you know, you don't write it for one group, you write it for the future.
Right.
We like Paula, but.
I get it. Totally do.
I had a.
The only other communication was that provided the planning, planning magazine, Paula, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, from AP. Don't shoot me, Nancy, but it's a very good article on a planner's take on the sharing economy titled, Could You Be and Be My Neighbor? It's also been provided to the city council because of how they're addressing. But I encourage you to read it, because I think it's well-written, thoughtful, and tells the city, gives the city some guidance if they so choose to look for it.
All, all are the same, right?
No.
All cities?
No.
I've read through this, and this, it is an excellent document, it's too bad, we can't post this on the website, but probably violating all kinds of copyright infringements, since this is in a publication, it's a trade journal, but I would encourage anyone to check it out, American Planning Association.
Paul, could you put like a hot link on it?
I can track you.
And then, you know, put it, so they could go to it without necessarily.
Sure.
Have a single use?
I can track you.
Okay.
If it's, if it's, if there's not a firewall, a digital firewall, a lot different.
And you could call and beg them to let.
But if not, you know, it's the February edition, 2016, of the American Planning Association's journal called Planning, and would encourage page 29, encourage anyone to go out and read it, because it doesn't talk just about the issues surrounding bed and breakfast, in particular, shared economy, bed and breakfast, but also things like renting your driveway and.
Yeah, especially if it's part of your permit to operate. And you could park in your front yard and renters could park in your driveway. That happens on Columbia, down the street from me.
Maybe rent to campers in your backyard.
Yeah, maybe campers in the backyard, there we go.
There's leased parking all over the street.
What?
There's leased parking all over the street.
Oh, I know.
Not too much in R1 zone, but in the R3, it's all over.
It's, yeah, and it's mainly been zoning driven too, right?
Right.
Is there anybody who'd like to add anything more to our discussion for Title 41 before we move on? And we'll continue the discussion.
Next time.
Report from the city planner?
I have a, just a few things, let me collect my thoughts here, a few things this afternoon. The first of which is our sustainability planning is going very well, we're getting a lot closer, we're working on layout and editing our document, we're having a work session this afternoon to try to hammer out some of those issues. I'll be next Thursday, next Wednesday evening, myself and Council Representative Pete Costas will be serving on a panel for the Ohio University Sustainability Film Series, which is a free, free film series that they do every winter, 7:00 PM at the Athena Cinema on Court Street. They're doing a showing of a documentary called Bikes Versus Cars, and they approached Pete and I and asked if we'd speak on the, speak afterwards. I haven't seen the documentary, so I don't know what it says or what they're talking about even, but it's supposed to be a very well-regarded documentary on, on a planning-related issue. So if anybody's interested, 7:00 PM next Wednesday at the Athena, it is free and open to the public. Historic Preservation Commission, we're working on, one of the things that they've approached or have we been discussing, has been the possibility of expanding the boundaries of the Uptown Historic District, which was created back in the early 1980s. There's many buildings that at that time would not have been, would not be eligible for historic status because of their age, but there are buildings that are, if they're older than 50 years, they're, they are potentially eligible for national registration, and there's a few buildings that have come online that, that may be worthy of eligibility, as well as some historic homes on, on Congress Street, College Street, and a few other areas, some of these, the Greek Houses, and a few rentals on Congress Street, which are 100 years or plus, may be worthy of national registry. So there, we're working on some of that with the state right now, there may be a grant program to assist with, with funding that, to do, to go through that process, it's, it's time-consuming and you need a professional to, to handle all the documentation at the federal level in general terms, and so we're working through that. Comprehensive plan, I know we've been dancing around that a little bit for the last month or so, we do have the mayor and safety director, we're gracious enough to provide funding for an intern who's working with me at about 10 or 15 hours per week right now on a part-time basis. His name is Richard Lynn Scott, he's a member, he's also been serving on the city's Sustainability Commission for about two years. He will be working on some mapping initially, getting a lot of base maps set up and doing some, we're going to be utilizing some of the data that the code office has as well, so we'll be setting up some mapping based on land use, rental properties, we can do mapping based on things like litter citations and things like that, so we can kind of set, kind of predict some of the issues that we know will be discussed in the plan, based on some of the issues that were discussed in our previous plan. And I'm trying to work with Mayor Patterson right now to try to put together a timeline for how he'd like to move forward, and at some point we will be convening a ad hoc or a steering committee to assist with it. I'm sure at least one or two planning commission members would be welcome to serve on that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Let's see, as far as the director at this point, there's no report from the code enforcement at this point, so.
I am not the interim director.
I understand that, okay. Opportunities for citizens to speak, there is no one here.